Get going. I'd like to start with, with a prayer. Father God, we thank you for every seat that has been filled here today. For each mind and heart that fills the presence of this room, we give thanks. Only you truly know what we are setting out to accomplish today. We have an idea, a vision, hints, and a daily instruction. We have talents and abilities and, and time to work. However, only you can see in the perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for even mistakes and missteps are used for good, for the Spirit to work. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as, as the lives of those we will encounter afterwards. Ready us to make every moment count, in Jesus' name. Amen. Well, thank you for staying. The town hall process is something we've been trying to do since we began the one board leadership model, and so it is part of that process of having a, a one board to try to meet three or four times a year with the congregation. We met last in March, and so we're meeting today. We'll also meet through the Charge Conference. That happens usually in October, and we may throw another one in there if we need to. So, so welcome and thank you for, for staying. We, I am the Chair of the Leadership Team at the present time, and I also serve as the Serve Focus Person. We wanted to share a little bit about the process of the Leadership Team, so that others, you know, it's been a couple of years since we voted on this process, and so we just want to kind of review. We are still learning, our Leadership Team, and it kind of is evolving even now. But we did begin this process in 2020, and we met in January and February, I believe, and then what hit in March was COVID. And so we really had to refocus some of the ways we had planned to work together, going to, you know, a Zoom meeting and, and trying to work through the process of, of being the church during COVID. We meet on the third Sunday of every month, most often, and those meetings are open to everyone. So we haven't had too many visitors. We haven't had too many that have come and, and presented or, or talked with us, but you are always welcome. And so we try to get something in the announcements so that you'll be reminded, but typically it is the third Sunday of the month, and we start at 6:30 here at the church. Within our group, we have a Focus Person, or each person has a Focus. We have two Trustees, and at the present time, that's Nick Solosik and Bryce Kubli. We have two Finance Focus People, and that is Jan Keller and Dave Bean. We have two Staff Parish People, and that would be Sandy Bennett and Katie Kennedy. We have one Connect Person, and that person is Milt Van Gundy. We have one Grow Person, and that's Sigourney Oder. I'm the Serve Focus Person, and Chirsten Condit is our At-Large Person. On that team, we also have Pastor Danny and Joyce Solosik. Joyce attends as our Treasurer, and Danny, of course, is our Pastor. Ten of us have a vote, and the two that are actually staff, they, they don't, they have their say, they can speak, but they are not allowed to vote. Our decisions are made most often by consensus, but we do vote on certain things, especially when they involve personnel. And our What Next vote, which will happen in August, that will be a vote as well. When we make big decisions, like on staff or trustees, finance, kinds of things, then we all, every one of us on that team, become the Staff Parish or become the Trustees. You know, we cert, we have our focused areas, but when we need to, we all come together as one big committee or one big group. Just a couple more things. The minutes are always posted on the bulletin board, and they typically are printed in the email on Wednesdays right after we meet. So please watch for that and read them. If you have a passion of any kind, you can bring it to us. You can bring it to a meeting, or you can bring it to one of the Focus Members that I've just mentioned, and most often, we will give our blessing for that to happen, unless it would, for some reason, not align with our vision and mission here at the church. But most often, we give our blessings, so. We also sometimes ask for assistance. We don't, we aren't necessarily called to do all the work of the church. We don't want it that way. That's not part of that one-board process. But we call on people to help with things like the cleanup or some of the painting issues, you know, some of the different projects that trustees may need help with. We've certainly asked for help with Vacation Bible School, with Wonderful Wednesdays, the Easter event. Those are just examples of opportunities that are put out there for you as well to become involved. And if you have a passion, if you have a desire to be a part of something, come to us, come to any one of us and say, you know, hey, I'd like to be involved with this. I have often had us, brought together a small group that has helped with deciding what our CARES projects are or what things that we focus on with our mission money that comes from endowment monies. And so I don't make the whole decision. It's part of the, you know, a small group or others on the, on the Leadership Team coming together to make those decisions. So each year, about three members of our team retire or leave, or at least are given the opportunity to do that. We can only serve six years in concession, and so every three years, somebody's leaving, or every year, at least three people are up for leaving. I don't know how to, I'm not sure that came out right, but hopefully you understand. So, you know, if you have an interest in serving on the Leadership Team too, please let any one of us know or give Pastor Danny a call, because we'd love to have others involved as well. And that, that decision is made through a nominations committee with some input from the congregation or the teams, so. As the Serve Person, I would just like to say a couple of things, and then I'll call up the others to give a brief synopsis of what's happened since March. But I wanted to let you know, this was in, printed in the minutes of our Leadership Team meeting a couple of months ago. But a group of us met, my, my small group, Michelle Irwin, George Johnson, Richard Brown, and myself, met in February, and we determined how to designate some mission money that was, that came from endowment. So a percentage of what we are, the church receives each year from endowment is, goes directly to mission work. And so this year, we, we put $500 towards a project called Free Clinics of Iowa. We gave $500 to our free pantry. We are, in the moment, spending $1,000 for MCC Welcome Packets that will go to those students that come with basically nothing. We gave $500 to Hope Cares, which is an emergency fund to help with housing and utilities and rent for those that might need it. We gave $5,000 to a youth foundation through the Bar Fund, which is part of the Marshall County Foundation. And we also will be giving, very shortly, money towards back-to-school supplies for high school students. If you, any one of you, anyone in the congregation has suggestions which we might use our mission money for, or a CARES project that we might target, please let me know, because we'd love to know about that. We'd love to have more ideas. The other thing I'd like to report on as the Serve Person is, I, I touched upon it briefly, but we were given some monies or gift cards from the Iowa State ISU Extension Office. They were doing a project, and I had to write up something. I attached that last month to my, my, my report as the Serve Person. But we were given four, four gift cards, one each month from March through June, and it was $155 each month. Two cards went to Hy-Vee, two went to Fairway, and we were able to purchase about 120 items each month that went right into our pantry. So we continue to thank the congregation for your assistance with, sometimes, some of you I know are giving money, some are purchasing non-perishable items that go right into our food pantry, and we feel very blessed with your help as well as God's urging for us to make a difference in the lives of many folks. We had another person at the pantry tell us recently that they just so appreciate the help, and it appears that they kind of watch for someone that's filling the pantry, because if we're in there, you know, if we're filling it, then it's not too long after, or even while we're still there, that folks will come in and ask to take some food and, and say, thank you so much. So thank you for your part in that as well.
We encourage people that if they come into the church for whatever reason, that they go and sell away.
Right. So if you're ever here, Sunday morning or another time during the week, in the back of the church, in the old scout room, Dave Esperson built us some really nice shelves that we continue to use, and there's always food on there, in there. And so there's plastic bags. You can take a bag and fill it up and take it out, because we just can't keep it filled. I mean, it doesn't matter how much we put in or, or when we do, it's gone in an hour or two. So there is a need. Okay, I see Sigourney sitting right up here in front, so I'm going to ask her to come forward, and she can give a report on the Grow section.
Thank you, Kathy. My focus area is the Grow Ministry, and this includes anything in which the primary purpose is to learn more about God, faith, and the Christian journey. These include Sunday School, Bible Study, Small Group Studies, and Vacation Bible School. So I'm going to give you some highlights. First of all, Wonderful Wednesdays. We had our end-of-season program on May 24th, and we called it Favorite Bible Stories. These were stories that had been selected by the children from the stories that we had shared during the year. And there were readings, there were songs, and then we gave certificates to the fourth graders. We had a hot dog meal for kids, families, and church friends to conclude the evening. Tomorrow, we're getting a group together to plan the upcoming school year for Wonderful Wednesdays. When to start, when to finish, what field trips to do, all of that fun stuff. Sunday School is on summer break. We're going to start again in September. And I want to give a big thank you to Jan Keller, to Nick Solosik, to Bryce Kubli. We've got new carpet downstairs, finally. The carpet that was there was 50 years old, was showing some wear, and now we have lovely new carpet that matches what's in our hallway here, and the room's all spiffed up, ready to go for kids. Group events. On June 25th, a small but enthusiastic group enjoyed an afternoon watching the Iowa Cubs in Des Moines. And then on July 20th, there were about 40 of us that were at Grimes Farm. Perfect weather, great conversation, and wonderful music for an outdoor concert by Royce John's. Check out the post on Facebook. Kathy took a bunch of pictures, and you can see a colorful rainbow of Hope t-shirts of us enjoying that concert. Now, adult activities. We've got a book study group that's been meeting on Wednesdays. The book we've been enjoying is Some Folks Feel the Rain, Others Just Get Wet. Well, we're about done with that book. In fact, this Wednesday will be our last meeting, and Sandy Bennett leads that group, and we haven't decided on our new book yet, so stay tuned. But we're going to take some time off. When will we start again, Sandy? September, we'll start again, okay. Last thing on my list is to put in a plug for Vacation Bible School. You've heard the announcements about that. Starts July 31st through August 3rd. It's for all ages, not just children, so we hope lots of people will sign up. There are four churches involved. Besides Hope, there is Elam Lutheran, Trinity Lutheran, and Our Savior Lutheran. So we're kind of outnumbered by Lutherans, so we hope lots of people will come to that. And then on August 13th, there'll be a special joint worship service out at Grimes Farm, and you'll hear more about that later. Thank you.
I think I'll call the trustees, if they could, if one of them come up. And just a reminder too, the book study is not just for those that have been meeting all along, so come and join when we start a new book. Prayer Questers as well, we meet on Tuesday mornings, and if somebody would like to join us at any point in time, you're welcome to, to join. But we are not meeting until middle of August, so.
I'm Nick Solosik, and I'm the trustees. As Sigourney already touched on, we've replaced the carpet downstairs. I don't know how many of you have seen it, but if you have time, sneak down there and take a look. And we repainted all the interior walls, so that's a nice, fresh-new space. The outbuilding out back, we have finally found a distributor of those, the correct materials for that building, and they are sitting back there. Now we are just waiting on the contractor to have time to come fix that building for us, and it is on his radar, so hopefully shortly, definitely before winter, that building will be back to 100%. We also continue to keep our ever-aging HVAC system up and running, going. We continue to work with B&amp;G HVAC with that. Trying to think of any other big projects that we've had since March. Bryce has all the notes. He messaged me late last night that he wasn't going to be able to make it, so. I'm doing this from memory. Yeah, the garage out back. It was damaged during the Durae show, and it took us a long time to find the correct materials, because the, the pattern on that sheet metal is very specific to that style building. Are there any other questions?
And we'll have time at the end if, if other things come up. I don't think that Milt sent anybody that had any. Do you have, do you have something Jenny's going to vote, or vote is going to speak for Milt, who is our Connect Person?
Just a word about the nurse, School Nurse Help Project was very successful last year. The school nurses were thrilled with all of the contributions that you made as far as pants and shirts and jackets. They seem to need mostly tights for the, for girls. So if you have extra tights at home, bring them in. We will store them in that back room until school starts. We've just handed out the needs sheets to the school nurses and are just getting them back. Some of the things, some of the suggestions, Stacy, who is in charge of the nurses, said that they were having kids come in with really dirty clothes and not having access to wash machines, and so she's trying to figure out a way that we can get vouchers of some kind to kids to use at specific laundromats wherever they might live. There's still some difficulty with figuring that out. You can't just give them money, quarters, to put in the machine. So that will be part of the project this year, and I, I was excited that she thought of that. Really trying to meet the needs of students who have needs, so. We, anytime, we're about ready to do some shopping again, so we encourage contributions to the School Nurse Assistance Fund.
And I, I believe that that is our September CARES project. But, and we will not have a CARES project in August, so that we give you a break. But also, just to get, you know, there was more need to wait for, for the nurses until we found out what they wanted. SPRC.
It's been very quiet, and so I don't have much of a report. However, I wanted you to be aware, there was a committee established, actually, through Milt, and we met with our Police Department to help us decide some security issues for us here at the church. As you know, yeah, that was one thing, Nick, you could have mentioned. We have a new entry system for Kim. She can see people as they are there, and then she can also hit a button and allow them into the church without having to get up and leave the office and that kind of stuff. Then on Sundays, we do have somebody that checks our doors, makes sure that they're locked, and then we, we make sure that we're in a location that we can hear if someone should come in later and need to come in. It is something that we, we could use other people to help us do that. So if there's people that are comfortable with checking doors and making sure that we are safe on Sunday mornings and sitting outside the sanctuary, but you hear and can participate, please let Milt or myself or Danny know, and then we will run a very simple instruction class to do that. But we have about eight to 10 of us who, who rotate and make sure that we're safe then on Sunday morning. Katie and I continue to make sure that staff has their needs met. We meet with Danny occasionally, just so that we can touch base and make sure that she is taking care of herself as well as all, all of us. So again, I thank everybody for the support that is presented to all of us on the, on the staff as well as on the Leadership Team.
Yes.
Right. Yes, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that. That's a, a good point, Don, so that people are aware. Kim worked with us and put together a little simple sheet that those of us who are the, what we call the Observer, we know what doors to check, how to check it, what doors to lock, what time, and those kind of things. So yes, we'll, we'll talk about getting that more out to people.
I'd like to call Joyce up for Finance.
I am Joyce Solosik, Treasurer here at Hope. I'm not going to go over specific numbers, but those of you who had a bulletin this morning, on the bottom of the sheet that says Prayer Concerns, at the bottom, is a Finance Report through the end of the year. And I do have copies of the complete Finance Report that I give to the Leadership Team each month, if anyone would like one. We are currently running a deficit. We, the last time we were in the black was in April. Two things happened in April. It was a five-Sunday month, which always makes Treasurers happy, when we have a five-Sunday month, and it was, and also Easter occurred in April. But since then, we have been falling. We have a reserve fund that we operate out of, so we are able to continue paying the bills. Some things I'd like to say in the summer is, when you go on vacation, your giving needs to continue, because our bills continue, whether you're here or not. Just like at your own home, when you're on vacation, your bills still keep coming, unfortunately. I know we're all dealing with inflation, and many have no increased income during this inflation time, so it makes it a little tough for everyone. But please pay attention to that. We have multiple ways you can give automatically. One is through the online app, and another one is through our bank, and you can see me about either one of those. Some people set up automatic giving through their own bank. The, the bank writes a check, and we, it just gets mailed here to the church on a monthly or weekly basis, however they want to do that. So see me if you want, you're interested in any of those online opportunities. And I guess, do we have any questions? Okay, see me if you want a copy of the Finance Report. Oh, yes. Well, we will have an audit on Wednesday, working with two new auditors. I'm glad to be working with Richard Brown and Diana Steiner, who will be helping with that audit on Wednesday, so.
I'm, I'm going to call on Glenn. He is the Chairperson of our Endowment Committee, and this is kind of a couple, three years in the, in the making, that it's been more active. But he will report on the Endowment Fund and some of the projects that we have, you know, supported in the last few years, or the last few months. And Jean, Joanne Nevin is part of that group. Glenn, Dave Bean, and I serve on it as the Chair of HLT, of the Hope Leadership Team, so.
I'm Chair of both the Memorial Fund and the Endowment Fund for the church. Memorial Fund has various amounts that have been given to the church, and small amounts have been distributed, like for nursing and for music, and one thing or another. But the Endowment Fund is our largest fund. As of the 1st of July, it was $306,429. It is invested through the conference, and the original base fund was from the sale of the parsonage many years ago, which was long before my time. We've had other. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't. I'm sorry, Joyce, I can't hear. Yes, if there, if you need clarification, you're the one.
The amount from the sale of the parsonage is in a separate fund.
Okay.
This money comes from the George Dixon gift, primarily. There was already some money in there, and then we added the George Dixon gift, and that's where this is from.
I was unaware of the distinction. Anyway, the Endowment Fund, as of January, the first part of January, received funds of $11,882, of which 10% went to missions, $1,188, and that was their duty to disperse it. Other amounts that we have dispersed, small meeting room chairs, which were also getting elderly, not quite as old as downstairs carpet, was $1,578. And the blinds there, also getting elderly, were $632. But those 50-year-old carpets, we paid $13,220 to replace them. If you average that over 50 years, that's not very much a year. One thing, we have an application form in the office. If any of you as individuals or a small group see something that you would like funded, please get that application, get a bid, get some information, and bring it to us. Usually, we will need to go through the trustees as well, but if it is some project that you would like to see done, apply for, for funding through the office on that form, and we and the trustees will consider it. Are there any questions? The committee might have a problem with that. Are there any serious questions? You're afraid, afraid of another flood?
I'll call on Pastor Danny to give her a report.
Well, either way, yeah. Since March, I've been kind of at large. I've been assigned to the directory, and I had wonderful volunteers, Jolene Kubli and Janet Weiss, that have volunteered to co-chair that. And Jolene's done a really good job of keeping us up to date. So it looks like we're getting ready to start making those appointments for pictures in September. The other thing that we wanted to celebrate was our partnerships with some of the CARES groups that we have assisted over the time. And so that's what Celebrate Hope Sunday is all about, is celebrating how Hope has been part of the community and helped with different projects. And so our celebration is at 5 o'clock on August 6th, and we will have food, fellowship, games, and the ice cream from Lily May's. We will be furnishing the hot dogs, hamburgers, beverages, and tableware. We have a sign-up sheet for side dishes, and that kind of helps us get an idea of numbers also. And I will be recruiting a few people to help in the kitchen that evening, so if anybody has desire to volunteer, see me. And we will also have a little entertainment, and Jenny has agreed to help us with that. Thank you.
Well, you all hear from me the most, so I'll try and keep this quick. Part of my report to the leadership team is just to help folks see where we're going in the year for worship planning. So you know that we finished our Unraveled series, and Sandy and I worked together to give you a sermon today. Our next series for four weeks will be called B-U-M-C. It's about being proud to be United Methodist, and we're looking at the themes of being United Methodist alongside Scripture. So we're going to do that for the next four weeks, and I have a couple of people picked out for guest preaching in that because I'll give you my answer to why I love being United Methodist, but I want you to hear what others believe as well. Then coming up in the fall, we'll have a series around prayers that do not work. I'm kind of excited about that series. That'll be four weeks. And then I have five weeks in October planned around trees, so I hope, I hope you'll enjoy those. Something that's kind of in the background that you may not know that is happening is that I'm working with a sound committee to work on some of these issues that you're hearing. This, it's really more of a sound, audio and video committee. We are working with two and a half organizations, two, or two companies that, that are professionals who work in this kind of, work in these kind of projects. We have two quotes, and we're working through them right now. We're asking them to tweak those quotes so that we can kind of create this project piece by piece. First, our prior, our first priority is to update sound. We'll then hopefully update some in-house video and then live stream. So those are kind of our three stages of this project we're working on. That half that I was talking about, that two and a half, there's a pastor in Cedar Rapids who does this work as a hobby, and he would like to work with us on some of the video changes. He's helped, he's a United Methodist pastor and has helped United Methodist churches all over Iowa, dozens and dozens, update their, their sound and their technology. He now only focuses on, on video, so we're not working with him on sound, but he is helping us just make sense of these quotes as well. So, so that's happening, hopefully. It's, it takes longer than I anticipated, but it's good, it's good work. I help participate in supporting the Ukrainian refugees that we still have in town, so I wanted to give you an update. We have, we've helped bring over four families with a couple other churches in town and with a tremendous financial support of people all over Iowa. We now only have three families still living in Marshalltown. One moved to Texas where they wanted it to be warmer, and I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is. Some of us are still in connection with them though, right? And we, we check in on them, and everybody seems to be, seems to be doing okay. That was the Marishnikov family who lived at the Swift House. That house, or by Swift Gar, Swift Greenhouse, there we go. That house is open again, so we've been working as a group to figure out, do, is, are there more families that want to come over? And there have been two more families identified that are still in Ukraine who would like to, to move to Marshalltown. We haven't had an update on them yet, but they're working through the process. Neither of them, neither of those families are big enough probably to go to Swift House yet. We have some other, other places that we might use first. On top of all the work that the leadership team does, I've asked them to read a teeny tiny book. Teeny tiny, is it teeny tiny? Yeah, it's pretty small. Sorry, Sigourney. It's true. I asked them to read a teeny tiny book with teeny tiny print. It's called "The 21st Century Christian." I asked them to read this because Michael Beck, one of the authors, is coming to Des Moines. He'll give a training session on a Monday to pastors and other laypeople who are interested. So as of now, there are six of the leadership team, and six includes me, who are planning to go on that Monday and receive a training. This book is neat, and I have a couple extra copies if anybody does want to read it with us, or if you're interested in going to this training, you, you'd be welcome to. I can register you. But I just wanted to give you a basic note, that this book is helping us find ways to create Christian communities where communities already exist. My favorite is in the tattoo parlor. You know, they talk about having that. They talk about going to a place and having burritos and Bible, right? Like you, you have a Bible study over burritos, that's not bad. If the mole in our book had one, it'd be something like Cake and Christ, or I don't know. But, but it's really neat. And if you remember last year, Barb Green invited us to go ziplining. That was, that's kind of already helping us think about how to create Christian communities in places where communities already exist. And even thrill seekers need Christ, right? The last thing I wanted to let you know about is, I'm just looking at my notes, is this What Comes Next Committee and Conversation. So just as a reminder, the What Comes Next group includes, this committee includes Cherston, Condit, Katie Kennedy, myself, the three of us are from the leadership team. And then it also includes Cole Weldon, Pastor Wally Page, my spouse, Eric Hall, Glenn Christian, and Carol Eddy. And together, the eight of us, eight of us, created a presentation where we facilitated conversations. Most of you were at one of those, I think. And we had those conversations take place, one on Sunday, July 9th, and one on Wednesday, July 12th. I just wanted you to know that I gave the results to the leadership team. Those results are confidential. And our committee asked the, the leadership team to consider those results for a month. This work is hard and holy work, and we didn't want it to, to, we didn't want them to just have a, an instant response. We wanted them to pray and spend time in Scripture and reflect over these results. So you will know once the leadership team votes, because they're going to let you know. But they're taking these results into consideration for the next month. And part of that was that our committee, the eight of us, we set a goal when we started meeting in April. We set a goal that we wanted to, to have our conversations end by Labor Day. We just kind of thought, let's spend the summer discussing this and be done. And part of that is because we heard at our last town hall, or two town hall meetings ago, we heard folks say, you know, we've been talking about this a long time, can we do this and move on? And I, we're, we're taking that to heart. This is a conversation we've been having around same-gender couples. We've been having this conversation as a denomination and individual churches for a very long time. The denomination's been discussing it since 1972, at least, probably before then, but we just, we wanted to, to take what we've heard from the congregation seriously. If you weren't able to be at one of those conversations, or even if you were, either way, if you have an extra note that you want to go with what you said, or what you voted, or what you didn't, or whatever, if you want the leadership to reflect on something more that you haven't told them already, you have until the middle of August. So you really only have a couple weeks to get more comments to the leadership team. Are there any questions for me?
So as we conclude, I just open it up to the, to the, those that are here. If you have questions about a specific something that's going on, or any, any question in general, you're welcome to raise that up at this point. I don't see any hands up. I appreciate you coming. I think this is our biggest town hall in, yeah, the biggest town hall we've had. There's about 50-plus people here, so that's pretty good. So thank you so much. We appreciate your help, and please, if you have things you want us to know about, if you have ideas, come to any one of the focus members, any one of the members of the leadership team, so. And watch for our emails and the information that comes out each month. Thank you. Have a great Sunday afternoon.